Okay, there we go, top of the hour. Shall we call the meeting to order?
I think that's a great idea.
Let's go.
Okay, let's go. Uh, I guess first, anybody wanna remove something from the consent agenda?
Not I.
Well, thank you.
Nothing.
Good. Seven A and B.
Without fail.
And a motion to approve the order of items moved.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Number three on the agenda, the verbal report. A couple of points I just wanna make, one is, we have done a spectacular job at expense control. I gotta tell you that, you'll see it in the budget. You'll notice our capital spend is down, but even on the regular operating line, I guess we've done a really good job this year. Kudos to your team.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For doing that, I think that's fantastic. Starting in April, Tara and I have discussed on the consent agenda, perhaps removing seven A and B from the consent agenda. So we don't have to do this kabuki dance every time.
Take it out every time?
So, that's what we'll propose in the agenda next time, I know you'll be disappointed.
I will be so disappointed.
Highlight up the meeting.
I know. How do you propose then handling those?
We'll just do, they'll be on the regular agenda, and if we don't have much to say about them, we won't say much about them. But what we normally do when we remove them, we'll just do it that same way.
What would I do?
Okay, uh, on the, uh, I don't know if you everybody had a chance to read the minutes, I did. These minutes that we keep getting are not good minutes, they're fantastic minutes. And I just wanna give a shout out to Linda.
What?
Linda got a little nervous.
She's nervous.
I, I don't, I do this for a living, and if you ever wanna think about maybe going to corporate life, you like.
Don't do that.
No.
Yeah.
But thank you very much. And then last, I hope you guys looked to page ninety-six and you saw that we were had one of the best place bases in the library, wasn't it?
Yes, wasn't it great?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know about you, when I come in, that's the first, you look to your right, and it's just so fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The dogs aren't here, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know how Linda, the dogs are gonna be there, but. If we don't see Joy in a few minutes, we know.
Yep.
So I'll turn it over to the director.
All right, thank you. Well, March is a month with a lot of things to celebrate and honor. St. Patrick's Day, Christmas Spring, Daily Saving Time, Women's History Month, Severe Weather Awareness Month. Which we marked today with a tornado drill.
Oh.
And it's Reading Month, which we make a big deal about here at the library. The youth services staff really went all out to celebrate with several kindergarteners, readers roundups. And several One District One book programs. So, they did a total of nine readers roundup events. This is where we bring in kindergarteners and the youth librarians do a skit, and they celebrate that they're learning to read. And talk about using the public library. Um, that reached four hundred and forty-five kindergarteners.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. And then, they also coordinated kickoff events for the four elementary schools to do a One District One book event. So they were encouraging students to read the book Otter by, um, what is it, Catherine Applegate. And those four events reached four hundred and forty-seven grownups and students. So a thousand people got the great message about all the great things that the librarians offer this month. So, the youth librarians were busy this month. Um, the photo contest deadline was March ninth, and we have received ninety-seven photos from sixty-four photographers.
Great.
It's a good year, yeah.
How does that compare to last year?
It's a, uh, par, yeah, yeah.
But you always get worried, like, 'cause it doesn't come in for two weeks, and you're like, oh my goodness.
I know, yeah.
Everybody wastes dead money.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Some public voting is available right now, it's on our website, if you wanna look at the photos. You can vote once per day. Um, it'll be up through the end of the week, and then the reception is on April fifth, which is a Saturday, two to three P M. So I hope you could all come to that. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we kicked off the library design project with a meeting with the C two A E team. Uh, including Jenna Walker, Chloe Alsberg, Dennis Johnson, and Jared Secor, that's our team from C two A E. Um, representing the library was myself, Catherine, Joy, Lauren Catoni Ellis, and Brooke Hoskins, who are representing staff. We discussed the project, we set up more meetings. Um, and we committed to using the data that was gathered at, for that pre-design and research report that we spent so much time on a couple of years ago. So the team is taking the data and the ideas there and creating a very, very rough draft holistic floor plan to highlight all the different changes that we wanna make. We will be meeting with the team tomorrow, Thursday, the small, the core team, to kind of review that and see how it looks. And then the plan is to present that to the department heads April ninth, and you all on April tenth at the building and grounds committee. So, um, again, it's a rough draft, and it'll be something for us to react to. And it'll be their first attempt at putting all those ideas and our requests in motion. Um, I wanted to point out a couple of things on the monthly activity report in the board packet on page twenty-six and twenty-seven. These were some questions that Shane had asked, and I thought that I'd share the answers with you all, um, 'cause you might be interested too. But you might be, you might notice that the total number of ebooks jumped from about nineteen thousand to forty-six thousand. That's because we did a dump of all the records that came with the database comics plus. So we downloaded all the bib records.
I saw the asterisks, but I didn't understand exactly what that correlated to.
Yeah, so those are in our catalog now, so that's why that jumped up. And then, um, the webpage hits, Shay noticed that those were down. They were thirty-six thousand last year, this year they were about eighteen thousand.
But there was another, um, data point right next to it that was up. It was, uh, going to the site, so it was data hits were down.
Yeah, I think this was homepage hits.
Yes.
Well.
One was up and one was down.
So, our web team, or our webmaster, um, decided to remove any hits from that statistic that are from in-house.
Oh, well.
So, because.
What does that mean from in-house?
Well, because staff opened up a page.
From staff, or from people who signed onto this?
Staff.
Okay.
Staff are helping, sometimes helping patrons, so.
But he decided he wanted to see a true, um, gauge of how patrons are using the site.
And if nothing else, now those patrons know how to access the information because the staff had probably gone.
But would that also be internal if you're thinking of a patron that's in the building?
Well, it's from the staff network.
Okay, so.
So, we have a segregated network.
It would be separate.
Yeah.
They come in as a separate.
Yeah.
Would that number include going to the app?
No, the app is, uh, separate, staff.
That I think was up.
Yeah, that's steadily increasing.
Yeah, I always use that.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I thought the numbers overall, though, were good. It just, there were some nuances there that you had to kind of think about a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
Um, I wanted to just mention too, the, in my written report, I mentioned that the SMS messages, notices had some limitations. Frankly, I'm disappointed with how these text messages turn out, we're getting this for free because we're doing.
Pilot.
Like, yeah, pilot program with innovative. There's, so there's just this webpage where you can sign up for the text messages. They really only tell you, hey, you have some items due, hey, you have a hold to pick up, but there's no other detail.
No names of the books or?
No names of the books, no due dates, you have to log into your account anyway. Um, there's no backend for staff to use to like see who's signed up, make changes, so.
Can I say that, um, we have the same issue with one of our systems, and it requires some sort of API?
Yeah.
Like third-party intervention, why, I do not know, and it's costly too. It seems ridiculous.
Yes, so, we are treating this as just kind of a, if somebody says, hey, can I get text messages? Sure, you can sign up here on this website, it's a nice to have, but it's a little bit disappointing. We're not gonna promote it very heavily.
But you said this is a gratis program, or you said, okay.
Yeah.
And is there a timeframe, is, does it end in three months, just as a trial period, or?
Uh, no, I bet they'll roll it into our service agreement out of that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And maybe they have time, they'll figure something else.
Yeah, yeah, maybe somebody.
I don't have high hopes.
Somebody will come to the rescue.
Gotcha.
I don't have high hopes, but maybe, yeah. Um, just a reminder that our new finance coordinator, Kathy Vogoshevich, will start March thirty-first.
That's pretty good.
Um, so I plan to ask her to attend the April twenty-second board meeting, so you know, come here, you're excited about that. And then I just wanted to comment on the executive order that was issued on March fourteenth by the Trump administration that calls for the elimination of the Institute of Museum and Library Services. This is the nation's only federal government agency that, um, works for America's libraries. Uh, this may impact Library Services and Technology Act grants, also known as L S T A grants. It's not going to impact this library directly because the vast majority of our tax money is local tax money. And we don't receive any, any federal funding. But, um, the thing that would, that we would feel would be Melcat. Melcat is heavily funded by federal grants. And there are some other state resources such as training opportunities, some other subscriptions that we get through state that are paid for with federal money. So, we'll see how this plays out, the American Library Association is watching it. There's a group called Every Library, which is a library advocacy group, they're watching it too. And I forwarded you guys a joint statement from several institutions, um, just before the meeting with more information. Just watching that.
Are there advocacy efforts that library lovers can take part in?
Call your legislators.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the A L A and the Every Library site have, um, ways that you can reach out to legislators.
So, any layperson or, um, library user can find that information? On the A L A's website?
Yeah, yeah.
And they probably have links to ways to contact, um, your Congress people?
Yes.
And I probably follow this clearly closely because we have our newsletter that goes out, that we could always have a little article. And I mean, we don't wanna rock the boat, but.
Yeah, we have to be careful, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, or maybe just to read more about it, just to make people aware.
Information, yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to sign one way or the other, you could just say this is.
I'm just saying. Right, it could impact the library.
Sure.
And it impacts libraries everywhere.
Sure.
And it's.
Do you know if there's any thinking about alternative funding for Melcat?
I think that they have to wait and see how it plays out.
Okay, 'cause that is a fabulous service, I use it a lot.
I know. I know. I have heard that the Library of Michigan said that they would probably take money away from state aid, which is the money that gets passed to every library. Again, for us, it's a really small amount of our budget, but for many small libraries, it's a huge amount of their. So, they would not receive that money, um, in order to keep Melcat going, but that's just a very preliminary rumor. Um, that is my report.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Uh, next item, motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
So moved.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Wonderful, and our call to the public, Tom, we'll start with you, thank you for coming.
Hi, Tom.
Thank you very much, actually, I'm representing SOC today, so. Uh, we did elect three new SOC members that will be starting as of April first, which is Anna, she's been on it before. Um, Jane, who's a member of the.
Admin department?
Yes, admin department.
So you accept the lead.
And Nicole Gillis, who's also been on it before.
Three at once, huh?
That's how they do it, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought that one person.
Typically, we do have one person hang, um, hang around, for lack of a better term.
That's right, for one.
But since Anna and Nicole have been on it before.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, and Anna, I mean, and Anna really wanted Nicole back on, so we go, okay.
Great.
Which is fine, because I have too much to do right now.
Tom's getting used to his good time.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And, well, we are also in the planning of our employee appreciation lunch, which will happen on, two dated, April ninth and April tenth. So more people can get involved.
Great.
Wonderful, next one.
Yep.
And our other guests, thank you guys for coming, great that you're here. Uh, okay, next, unfinished business, is there any? I didn't think sweetest or new business that takes us to the budget, do you wanna tee this up, Tara?
Sure. All right, well, I am pleased to present the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget, which includes, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget, which wasn't really amended. Um, I wanna note a couple of last-minute changes that were made after the packet went out, so you have some papers in front of you. Shay and I talked about changing the revenue item for investments, so that went up by about two hundred thousand dollars. So, I gave, for those of you who have the binder, I swapped out the pages in your binder.
Oh, okay.
For those of you who don't, I put pieces of paper in front of you, so you should have a new motion. You should have a new one of these long budget summary sheets. And you should have, um, updated copies of the revenue detail pages in front of you too. I just swapped out.
So you referring to the six-ten number?
Yep, that went up to eight-eighty-one.
In prior, it was six-ten again.
Yes, okay, in what came online.
So if you look at our formula, if you look at our formula, there's a way we're supposed to calculate it, which is this page, so we just adhere to the formula.
So the motion that was sent is incorrect, it's a paper motion, right?
Right.
I agree with that one.
Yeah, I know, I see it, I'm ready, I'm ready.
All right, so let me review the highlights of the budget, I'm, so I'm following the director's budget message, which also includes these figures that should be changed, you'll just have to follow along with me and, um, refer to this summary as we go. Um, so the twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget, we didn't make any changes, it, it all is coming out the way we thought it would. Um, except revenues did go up a little bit, or we anticipate that they will be a little bit higher than they were in our, um, March twenty-twenty-four adapted budget. Uh, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, or five percent higher. And that is just due to updated figures from the township. Our operating expenditures increased by a little over seventeen thousand dollars compared to our March, um, twenty-twenty-four operating adapted budget. This was due to an increase in building insurance and costs related to our online, um, catalog upgrade, which we actually did in the previous fiscal year, but they charged us some, anyway, it was kinda confusing. Um, so revenues slightly exceeded expenditures in that year, and the fund, so the fund balance, um, increased by five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The library board requested the full assessment of the two approved mills, um, at the August twentieth public budget hearing. So one point eight-six-five-three mills were levied in the library services on the Bloomfield township December twenty-twenty-four winter tax bills. And that is due to the passage of our millage renewal in February of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, so we continue to be in very solid financial condition, and this allows us to continue to focus on some capital improvements over the next couple of years, including the library design project. Uh, any comments on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Just the circulation fees, maybe you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Oh, sure, circulation fees, this is the first year that we did not charge fines, we're still charging some fees, but we eliminated overdue fines. Um, in twenty-twenty, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, I think the actual number was around twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, this year, we weren't really sure what to budget for that, it's an estimate. We took that twenty-five thousand and isolated what we think was due to fines, and it subtracted that, and that's how we came up with, what did we put, eight thousand?
Eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, it's actually gonna come in a little bit higher than that.
And fines, these are really replacement costs, 'cause we don't charge fines, right?
You got it, yeah.
Great.
So it's not. It's not a revenue if it's replacing an item loss?
We count it as revenue, that's how we account for it.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk about the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget for the general fund and the gift fund. Um, let's talk about the general fund first. Uh, revenues are expected to increase by seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, or seven percent over the current fiscal year. That's mostly due to an increase in property tax values and an increase in investment returns. So that number is different from what you see in your budget message. Expenditures are proposed to increase by one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, or two percent over the current year's budget. Um, that's mostly driven by personnel costs, so personnel expenditures are proposed to increase by a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, or two-point-seven-nine over the current year's budget. Um, that's due to an increase in health insurance premiums, which happen almost every year. A proposed three percent increase in staff wages. Um, we did conduct that compensation and classification study this year, and that led to, um, some equity changes along the way to move people into new grades, to move the grades up a little bit. So, most everybody got a three percent wage increase, but then some people got a little bit more to adjust them for where they need to be in the overall, um, compensation schedule. Um, library services is increasing by twelve thousand dollars, that is mostly due to one new resource we're getting called Recollect, which will help us highlight our local history collection in a digital way. And facilities and equipment is projected to decrease by just over five thousand dollars, um, because of an expenditure we had in last year's budget that we don't have this year.
Tara, the library services number gives me a little angst, given that most vendors are like three, four, five, six, up to ten percent year over year.
Uh, will the librarians contact vendors and ask for figures?
I know they do.
So, we have August, we can make amendments, if things come in higher, we can, we can amend it.
Well, I'm sure they've taken that all into account, this is their first rodeo.
You have a different point of view, so.
Just, it, I mean, it's fantastic, the budgeting is fantastic, and, um, so, just, I wanted, just wanted to bring it up.
Well, I'll mention it too, especially adult services, and, um, we'll watch it, and then if we need to make an adjustment, we can in August.
You're not dropping anything.
Right.
But we know.
Well, some adjustments have been made.
Okay. Oh, kudos.
All right, and then other operating expenditures is increasing by six thousand dollars over the current year's budget. This is mostly due to postage rates, uh, which keep increasing. And we want to add another page to our print newsletter, which costs money too, so, we're gonna do that. Capital projects increased by six hundred thousand dollars, or thirty percent over the current budget. Uh, let me go through the capital of projects and point out just a couple of the newer items and some changes. Um, the big, the biggest one is that library design project. Um, most of what we pay for this year is going to be the actual design services. The construction will start, if everything goes to plan, at the very beginning of the next calendar year, possibly fiscal year, renovation. You know what they call construction, is the work, Joy, remember? We told them we had a lot of angst always how they said the word construction, and they're like, we're just referring to the work, that's the work getting done. The work is the work, is the work. All right, so on the capital improvements plan, I don't know what page that is in your book.
Maybe nine?
Page three.
Page nine?
It's a long piece of a paper.
It's, um, after page one, after the capital.
Forty, forty-two.
On the PDF. Um, okay, number fifteen, the A V upgrade in the community room for seventy-five thousand dollars, that's a new item this year. Um, the A V in that room is just really bad, it needs to be changed.
That's in the community room?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The library design project, number twenty-eight, that's a big one that we added, of course. Number thirty-two, U P S replacement, I don't, I think that's a new one this year. Um, that's just for an uninterrupted power supply in our server room, so we can keep everything running in case the power goes out. Um, our door access annual fee, I don't, I can't remember if that was in last year's, but we did that door access upgrade. So, that's just the annual fee for the software that we use for that. Bamboo H R is new, that is an annual fee for that, H R software that we use and love. And then the whole third page, number thirty-eight through forty-seven, these are all new items as of this year. So we have automatic door openers, that is for these, uh, staff doors back here to make them accessible for all. Staff computer and laptop replacement, it's time to buy new computers for staff.
That thing's like seventy-eight pounds, if you remember.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Um, we have to upgrade a backup server, or get a new backup server, so Paul tells me. Uh, we need to upgrade our phone system, which is a big expense. Uh, Paul, our department head in I T, would like to do a disaster, disaster recovery plan of our, um, I T infrastructure.
That's probably wise.
Um, we wanna make some improvements to our Wi-Fi access, uh, our Wi-Fi in the building is, can be problematic. So we wanna make some changes to that, that's expensive. Um, Paul wanted to build in a little bit of money here for an emergency I T project in case, you know, something bad happens or something breaks unexpectedly, so we have some money for that. Um, proof point, number forty-five, is something we're looking at adding next year, that is something to do with Office three-sixty-five, I don't really know exactly what it is. You'll hear more later. Um, we would like to replace the skylights that are in the magazine room, um, they leak.
How would they affect all of the, the new, like, rubber coating that we're putting on the roof?
It's a good question, I'd say to consider.
Because the skylights all sit about twenty inches above the roof.
Oh, okay, okay.
They all have risers.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Good thing Tom's here.
Thanks, Tom, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
Speaking of roofing repair, uh, number twenty-six. What, the, we're, 'cause there's no money.
Yeah, we're gonna take that out because it was, we did it last year. I will tell you, the only reason I didn't take it out is because whenever I take stuff out of this, it settles, it collapses.
That's interesting, oh.
It messes it up, this is gonna be a project for the new finance coordinator.
I thought maybe you would not be like, would, so that maybe.
It's just my very works. It's, no.
I, I was wondering the same, 'cause I, I thought we had done the work, but, I, I mean, are we?
Are we done?
We're done.
Okay.
We can. There's a couple other things here that are zeroed out that we need to remove.
Okay.
Uh, and then the last one was revamping the irrigation along telegrams up on that berm.
Yes. What does that mean?
Well, we have, you know, irrigation installed throughout the library grounds and campus. And over time, as things shift and move, and we put new beds here and there, it's just that the water, you know, it's watering mulch,
It's gotta be upgraded.
Or it's not watering the areas where it needs to, so we wanna revamp that.
And remind me again where we're putting this sprinkler system over, on the side of, um, Lom Pine, 'cause that needs to be revamped.
I know, we have to.
But that was going, that was originally under the, the little golden pond thingy, pond like lake?
The ditch, that, the ditch has really taken a backseat in our priorities.
I know. Okay, but the landscaping has not.
No.
Okay, gotcha.
It, it's not that I don't wanna do the project, it's just trying to get it moving forward.
Right, okay.
It's a challenge, so. Any questions about the liberal business?
And you're all going to, um, Windows eleven, is it?
Yeah, what is it, Windows eleven, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we will do that, and I think Paul told me it was summer, is that going to be a huge expense?
I don't, I don't think so, I think it's just an upgrade. I don't, I think it's not.
It depends on if it's hardware and software.
Oh, wait, I'm sure it's just software, yeah.
I thought so too.
Is there training, would there be training involved?
I don't know. We haven't talked about that.
That little paperclip guy comes back.
Yeah. I never had it, so, yeah.
The paperclip guy.
I was always, I've always been a math person, so.
I like to send that gift to Linda sometimes, to her lab. All right, so, in summary, total library revenues are estimated to be ten million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, and seven hundred seventy-one thousand dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six, and that's different from what you see in your, so. Operating expenditures are estimated to be seven million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. If you add in capital expenditures, it goes up to ten million, four hundred seven thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars. And the fund balance is estimated to be seventeen million, six hundred sixty-seven, two hundred twenty-four. Talk about that this summer. And then the gift fund is actually included this time around. And again, as usual, we don't assume any gifts except for the Meyer Scholarship. Um, I did just review the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan grants, and we're gonna take a couple of those.
Good.
The fair rate of one.
Oh, good.
Um, gosh, the endowment one, I think, and of course, the Meyer Scholarship. And the friends have been extremely successful at their sales, and this year they gave us a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
For them.
I'm sure we'll be getting some gifts from them as well. And in closing, I just thank you all for your careful review of the budget, I thank all the department heads for all the work that they do. Um, Lyndon. Lyndon does a lot of work for this, Catherine does work for this, um, Monica did a bunch of work on this before she left. So thank you to everybody for making this happen.
Well, this is as important as the annual report, it's really our fiscal annual report.
Yeah, so.
Fiscal plan.
Yes, this is incredible. Very detailed, thank you for making it.
Understood. It seems like just last year, our budget was like six million, and now it's ten million. It's just.
Yeah. I'm pretty excited.
Lots of exciting things down the road.
Yeah. I'm really excited about the design project.
Yeah, we can't wait to hear, see the plans that you guys talk about.
Well, thank you, wonderful, I would propose we go to the removed items, because this has one of the removed items on it, so we do seven A and B and then approve the budget, and then this is twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Well, wait, we can.
Would you rather do it this way, we can?
Yeah, let's do this first, so we make sure it's done.
Okay, would you like to re?
I would be thrilled.
A lot of.
To approve on a functional and total fund basis, the proposed general fund budget is attached for fiscal year April first, twenty-twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library, ten million nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars in revenues, ten million four hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars in expenditures. Fund balance reserves shall be increased by five hundred and twenty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars, not net revenue. There is a planned use of fund balance for capital projects, including the library design project. To approve on a functional and total fund basis, the amended general fund budget is attached for the current fiscal year, April first, twenty-twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library, ten million one hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars in revenues, nine million six hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars in expenditures. Fund balance reserves shall be increased by five hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six, twenty-six dollars, five hundred and thirty-two thousand twenty-six dollars, sorry, net revenue. There is a planned use of fund balance for capital projects, including video surveillance upgrade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to read the gift fund one, too.
Oh, you both, all right.
That's on page thirty-nine.
Got that. To approve, this is the gift fund, to approve on a total fund basis, a proposed gift fund budget as attached for fiscal year April first, twenty-twenty-five through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library, seven hundred dollars revenues, one hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars expenditures. To approve on a total fund basis, the amended gift fund budget as attached for the current fiscal year, April first, twenty-twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in the following amounts for the support and maintenance of Bloomfield Township Public Library, one hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenues, and two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars in expenditures.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, that was great, we, we had a long working session before this one, so I think we've all done, nice job, especially your team. So going back to seven A and B, uh, which is page fourteen, on page fifteen, some of the checks, you see the plant ran check for sixty-four hundred, how is that going? Are they coming out completely when Kathy starts, or are they staying in?
So Erin has been coming one to two days a week. And then when Kathy starts, she is going to, Erin will still be here for a couple of days a week to train Kathy on some of the things that I can't train her on, such as using the accounting software and some other things. So she is planning to stay around for a little while. Also, our audit will be starting pretty soon, and Erin has said she will stay on to support through that as much as possible, so I anticipate she will be with us probably through mid-May.
Great, and the next one, the play space, what's that for?
That is for, oh, uh, wait, what page are you on?
Page fifteen, it was.
Play space or safe space?
Checkmate apparently, sorry, Safe Space Concepts for the play area.
It's for um something that these librarians bought for the early childhood area, I don't know exactly what they bought.
Will you just send me a note?
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's probably like a little fence area or something, to keep them safe, so they don't crawl into.
Yeah, or it might be like some toys or something like that.
Oh, maybe.
And that next one, what is, what are, the, the vendor that provides safety data sheets, what's that?
Velocity EHS.
It is um. Safety data sheets, uh, it's hazardous materials, sheets on hazardous materials. That we're required to have.
Uh, like spec sheets, I think that's what you were talking about.
Yeah.
So do they fill them out?
Yeah, they, it's a subscription service, if there are any updates, we can, we are able to print them off.
And then on the regular items, there's one FNVO, we happened to have another conversation, which is the credit card, which maybe we'll rename.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I know you guys all remember that, but I just can't, and uh, on, there's one Apple Books, what's that?
Uh.
Apple Books, it's a regular check, the second one, twenty-seven hundred. Is that Apple, Apple?
No, it's not Apple, Apple, it's.
Kids.
I think it's a kids book back there.
Yeah, I think so, too, some publisher kids books.
Okay, and then Mango Language, what's that?
That's great.
It's an online resource to help you learn new languages. I just, I just looked at that.
Like a hoy baby, like a.
Yeah, did you?
Uh-huh, and if you were a pirate, they'd give you all the verbiage for hoy.
It's pretty cool.
Even still?
Yeah.
It used to be based in Michigan, like at Farmington Hills.
Yeah.
Did they?
Um, northwest Carolina.
Oh, you're right, you're right, were they with Thompson Gale?
Uh, we, when I worked for them, we did own them for a bit.
Part of it. Okay.
And, and somebody else did, and then they, I think they're on their own now.
Gotcha.
Thank you, and then on page nineteen, which is our current, this is our current spend, you'll see we're at ninety-two percent of the year, and we have that great column that shows us how we're doing. This, the circulation fees, we already talked about, it's twelve, or, I, I agree with you, Joan, it sounds, it seems like that shouldn't be fine, but costs, but whatever, okay, that's up. But look down under other operating expenses, this is what I was talking about, all these numbers, if they're below ninety-two, it means we're, we're much lower than we, than our budget, and look at how low some of these numbers are, that you've got, of course, the capital projects, but every one of them is coming in below, and then, you know, almost, and then some of them significantly so, and that's what I was really impressed by on our spend here today. That was all I have on there.
All right.
Uh, okay, so a motion to approve the items that were removed from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, and then other, I had one.
Okay.
If you guys go to page seventy-eight. Sorry, we've just been taking a minute. This is our general fund balance, so you'll see where we are this year, we talked about that, look at what happens over the next two years. I, I don't know, if you want to have any comments? You know, we all have to look at that village acceptance, and Tara's correct, we, we have to be educated about what happens if we take it, if we, you know, take only some of it, so this will be our summary discussion point. Anybody else have any other?
Other, other, other something.
Other other?
On that later.
For other other?
Can we do?
This is the other other.
Can we do the resolution for the Friends?
Yeah.
So we, the Friends are celebrating their sixtieth anniversary this year, just like, we did last year, the Friends started just a year after we did.
Kudos to them.
Uh, and so I thought it might be nice to mark the occasion with a resolution, and so um Lyndon drafted this up, she and I batted it back and forth, and the diamond anniver, or sixtieth anniversary is diamonds.
Did you buy us all a gift?
Not. Are you? No. But, um, it did inspire our resolution, so I'm hoping that Joy could read this resolution, and then I will present it to the Friends tomorrow, Ethel.
Very nice.
Lovely. Friends of the Bloomfield Township Public Library Resolution, whereas since nineteen sixty-five, Friends of the Bloomfield Township Public Library have been a brilliant facet of Bloomfield Township Public Library's success, nice. Whereas for sixty years, they have championed library enrichment with their funding, raised through their legendary Second Saturday Sales, the enduring membership dues, and generous special contributions, and support this library's abundance. Whereas they enhance services beyond tax-funded basics, procure cutting-edge equipment, vital materials, and captivating special programs. Whereas this milestone marks six decades of generous volunteerism, fundraising, and advocacy that have significantly enriched the library's programs, resources, collections, and facilities. Whereas their dedication and hard work have culminated in over one point nine-five million dollars in support since nineteen ninety-five, including one hundred and eight thousand dollars in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Bloomfield Township Public Library Board of Trustees celebrates and deeply appreciates our sparkling Friends on this true diamond anniversary. The Friends of the Bloomfield Township Public Library are a priceless gem.
Uh-huh, that's great.
Bravo.
Yeah.
Really nice.
And this is signed by Shane, it's Bradlin, President, Bloomfield Township.
Which would be wonderful.
Library Board of Trustees, and it's dated tonight, March eighteen.
That's great.
Well read, Joy, thank you very much.
Good job, you two.
Very well, yes.
Can you expect your first writing very soon?
Nice writing.
So, motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, motion I approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. unanimously carried.
Yay, thank you so much.
That's lovely.
Thank you, Friends.
It'll be fun to give them tomorrow.
So our next meeting's Tuesday, April twenty-second.
Which is the fourth Tuesday, not the third.
Oh, right.
What time is that B and G meeting to say?
Nine AM.
Nine AM, thanks.
Oh, it's nine, and that's on the ten.
Oh, really? I have that at ten.
I think we moved it.
We usually meet at nine.
Great, nine is good, and just.
Now, are you having any guests at that meeting, will that um, can be the same?
I don't know yet, we, Tom and I really gotta, I reached out to Joe Christopher uh last week, and I haven't heard that from him, so I want Tom and Joe and I to talk and figure out what we want to do now, and then I'll bring that to you all.
Okay. Okay.
But the prime thing we'll be talking about is the library design project, so we will have the C two AE folks here.
I'll go be here, okay, gotcha.
When's the building in close?
April tenth, Thursday, April tenth at nine AM. Is it on the date?
Oh, it's just not on here.
Oh, it's not, oh.
I think we, we hadn't determined it, if I remember, because we had to cancel the last one because of weather.
Maybe. Um, that could be, yeah.
That was it, I'm sure of this steel brain.
I am.
Yeah. And I can send out a Zoom um link closer to it, yeah.
Please, if you would, yes, thank you.
And you're gonna zoom in for the Friends meeting, right, or Google Meet, I guess, is what they like to use?
Yes, yes, they seem to like.
Is this your first?
What, what is that, I've never been there before.
So I was there previously.
Oh, okay.
This was my, I, I was in person last time.
Okay, gotcha.
They were very kind to allow me to call in, probably because I'm not the only one calling in.
And do they meet up here now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's nice.
It's gonna be six AM for me, but I've still made it, and we'll see.
Oh, you're gonna be um here.
I'll be in LA.
Um, we adjourn the meeting.
Not yet.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Great.